All right, thank you, thank you everyone for coming and joining us tonight with the workshop. Uh, before we get started, Mr. Jerry Walker will lead us in prayer and uh, please stand for the pledge. Okay, we'll dive right in. Uh, first and only thing on our agenda tonight is the budget workshop.
Mayor and city council, thank you for being here tonight, uh, for this budget workshop. Appreciate my staff who's here. Also, um, I'd mentioned that Brendan Dennehy, his wife is testing, we think she tested positive for uh, COVID, which means he's home with her. I would like to say a late thank you to the Datamax Lee and Mark Charlie. Who are Datamax who really come over and uh, run the system tonight. Also, just a mention, honorable mention to Robert La Croix, he works with us. He happens to also know how to do the uh, mixer over there for the microphone. So he extended to it last minute. So we really appreciate them. This is uh, after a year being here, this is really the first kind of a normal, even though it seems hairy to Mikel and some of the guys. It's like a normal to me budget process where we met with you guys uh, back in May. And this time putting it together uh, in July and we're here now to present the budget that is, it's a proposed budget. It's balanced. Um, we'll go through it and anything, any changes you might want to make, either taking things out or putting things in. We uh, will do that tonight. Mikel's got a uh, PowerPoint that she'll take us through that just gives us a high view of the budget. Very comprehensive view that kind of helps let you know where we are. And then any questions you have and any specific areas or budgets you want to look at or things, we'll do that and then uh, and then we'll take that and make the changes, put it in final form and bring it back for public hearings in August and for a final vote at the end of August. So that's kind of where we are. I want to turn the time over to Mikel and thank her. She's kind of been, um, well, she's been doing this pretty much by herself. We had a lot of input, all from other department directors and so forth. As far as putting together the presentation and the book and stuff, it's her and some interns have been doing that. And I want to let her know how much I appreciate. I know how much work it is. And uh, even if you have two or three or four people helping, but she's, she's done a great job. So thank you. So without further ado, let me turn it over to uh, Mikel and she can uh, pull up her uh, PowerPoint and go from there.
I want to thank y'all very much for allowing me to be here today and for presenting this budget workshop to y'all. Um, it's been a little bit more challenging for me this year, but um, I want to say thank you all, to you all for giving me this opportunity to be here and to thank all of my department directors and the city manager for the help that they've given me on this um, budget. Going to go right in. Um, who's changing slides for me? Um, y'all had asked me to, to look at what the reserves were. So our, our first look at the reserves on where we are. The general fund reserves um, are about $2.2 million. And that gives us right around 70 days. Looks like we're going to have about $150,000 to roll into reserves at the beginning of this year, at the end of this year. Um, we're looking at some possibilities of things that we might fund from this current budget from 2021 that we might move back and fund this year uh, to maybe reduce that amount that we roll in. But we're still, that's still preliminary right now. That's where we're looking at that will potentially run into reserves.
If you remember last-
Let me ask you real quick, what page now we're on until we can follow you up here?
Um, this is, you're talking about for the budget? No, this is just a PowerPoint that I've kind of- This is a PowerPoint. I don't know which one of these microphones is working, so.
Which, which microphone is she using? This one over here? Okay, whichever one you want. Let me just say too, if you remember last year, we ended about $300,000 or $350,000 uh, in the red from that budget. This year, and of course it took us a few months to figure that out if you remember because we didn't know where we started or anything. So I just point out that every budget, we will have a balance left when we get through. If we do it right, we budget it and then we watch it throughout the year. Monthly finance uh, reports and uh, the staff keeps their stuff within the budget. We should have money to turn back into general fund and we'll grow that fund. So, okay.
And for this right now, we're just going to go in through to get an overview. And we get done, we can go through the, the book if y'all, if y'all so choose after we have finished. For uh, water and sewer fund, we're about $3.4 million, which is about 120 days in reserve. Um, we don't have any rollover expected in the water and sewer fund because right now we have several uh, water uh, projects that we have to, to fund, which we're certainly currently at about $328,000. But there have been some pumps that have broken that we have to repair um, before we move forward um, to continue our water treatment plants and our wastewater plants to keep them operational. Um, but we do, uh, once we pay those out, um, we're still not sure what those expected costs are going to be. Then I'll have a better idea of where we're going to end up in the water and sewer fund. Right now, we're sitting at about $328,000 and after speaking with our utility operations manager, I know for a fact that that's, that balance is going to go down significantly. So I don't expect us to roll that balance in. Um, in fact, it's probably going to be closer to around the 150 to 120 if anything at all after we uh, repair those, those water pumps um, and things that have gone out over at the, over at the utility uh, department.
Uh, Mikel, so in the general fund is 70 days. Is that a good number of days for reserve? Are you comfortable with that?
I'm very comfortable with that. I'd like us to get around 75 days, just to be a very solid number. Um, but we're, we're very healthy and very comfortable with 70 days. A lot of cities have 60 days, so the fact that we have 70 days is, is almost 10 days, you know, really healthy into the reserve.
I'd like to add in that I don't think really, really healthy. She and I disagree on that. 60 days is not a good idea. I think more like 90 days, three months, because there's three months in the summer before where the revenue runs out. I think if you remember, you all said this is at about 20%. Uh, you all said we want to build it up to about 25%. And uh, and, and I tell you, the rating companies, which we just talked to today, they like to see it at 25 or 30%. And then anything over, if we ever get a fund balance that's over 25 or over 30, then we can use that money as we start the budget here, put back in the budget to buy a one-time items kind of thing, not people, but, but items, and try to keep it at 30. But as we budget the year, keep in mind, we'll budget for the year and we'll have it at the level we want. And then as we start the year, the other year ends and we end up dumping whatever's left over back in it. So it increases again. So it's, it's healthy, once we get it up there to use some of it every year for one-time items to keep it. So it's not going up to 50, 60, 70% with, and we don't have to raise taxes to buy stuff. We can use the fund balance. We don't use all to do something. So, but again, I, one of these times we hadn't really talked about that. I really think that uh, three months at 90 days or even 30% is a good idea. And the rating companies love it. We decided, we talked, had this discussion with y'all if you remember, and you guys decided you thought you'd try to shoot for 25%. This is at about 20%.
Real quick, so 70 days is like the norm. So with water and sewer is 120 above and beyond, or is that the norm as well?
And water and sewer fund is a little bit different than um, general fund. Water and sewer fund relies on um, water revenue because you know, you have your wet years, you have your dry years. So 120 days is industry standard for the water and sewer fund.
120 days for them is in the winter time, if you think about it, because we got revenue pouring in in the summer. In the winter time, it's not so much.
Um, we'll, we'll get into some of the general fund revenues now. Um, I, I know you probably have seen this graph before. Sales tax is the largest uh, revenue stream in the general fund at 32%. Property tax is around 26%. Um, the other smaller revenue sources make up the rest. Um, in 2019, it entered, it uh, increased by 4%, generated about $200,000. In 2020, it increased around 8%, generated um, a little bit more than that, about $250,000 through the six months. Um, this past month, we, we dropped about 2% and, and we were right around the 6% in a mark. Um, and it still continues to be the largest revenue source for the city. Um, when we went into the 2021 sales tax budget, we were looking at where we wanted to be. Um, while it still continues to be the largest source of revenue, I didn't want to budget too much of an increase into 2021. So we decided to just keep a flat budget going in and so we kind of budgeted the same for 2021.
We budgeted the same that we ended up, that we ended up with.
That we project we'll end up with for 2021.
We've, we've been about 8% this year higher than last year. But we're going to keep that flat for this next year, not knowing what COVID does. But so far, we've done pretty well. Even in the worst month, we were 2% above last year.
Um, we received the certified appraised values. Um, and they came in at about, when we originally got some of the certified appraised values, we were expecting them to come in a lot higher and we were budgeting those numbers based on that. Our final numbers that we, that came in were only 2.4% and most of that was due to new improvements. So we saw very little um, in the way of actual increase in values. When the original um, values came out, um, I'm guessing a lot of people protested and the um, Fraser went back and looked at those values and ended up lowering them a lot more than what they would have lowered them had COVID not come around. And that, that kind of hit us on the, the double whammy side as far as what our revenue projections were going to be. Um, but property tax for us is about 26% of our revenue. Um, and it has, our tax rate has remained the same rate for the, for the last two years. And before that, it was a constant rate for five years. Um, it stayed at .3437 and then it was at 3712. Um, the prior year MNO, we decreased it a little bit to kind of pick up some of the park debt so we wouldn't have to increase the rate. Um, when the rate went up from .577 to .0696. And the reason that the actual rate went up two years ago was when they, they did that park debt. So we went up from the .3437 to the .3712 to incur that um, park debt. This year, we will actually take on the operations of that park. So we will have to increase some of our operations a little bit for that park. Uh, we, I have taken those and did some preliminary calculations of the tax rate. Um, last year's adopted rate is the first column. You'll see that um, we had a total tax rate of 3712 with our MNO operations of .3463. Based on that, the effective rate or the no new tax rate now is looking at 3410 um, with a MNO rate of .2923 is what our adjusted MNO rate is after the sales tax adjustment comes in. It brings a total rate, if we leave the sanitary rate the same, and we have to um, adjust for the fact our INS rate's going up a little bit. It leaves our total rate at .3652 is what our effective rate would be. Um, if you look at what the rollback rate would be or um, the voter approval rate, again, that voter approval rate is calculated on uh, 3.5%. Um, that would bring us at .3901 or a MNO rate of .3171.
Okay, put that in English. What does that mean?
Okay, so um, the tax rates that they're saying would, um, based on a 2.5% increase, that would, they're saying would generate the same amount of revenues last year is .3652. That's based on-
Appraisal rate.
2.5% increase in the valuation?
Appraisal.
With the, with the 2.5% evaluations. But for us, because we have to send a little bit more over to the debt service side, that's going to decrease the amount we have on the general fund operation side. Because our debt, the amount that we have to pay, the debt rate went up just a little bit.
We're, we're still trying to catch up, but we're not putting all the park debt in the debt service. But this is last year for that, I think.
Right. And then the other one is the actual maximum amount that we can go for the rollback, which we were doing just the voter, the 3.5% with the new rules. Um, 3.5% rate would be .3901, which would be the maximum amount you would go without voter approval. Now, we can go above that because it's a disaster year. I didn't calculate that. I didn't know if y'all would be interested in seeing what the actual maximum amount we could take with the disaster rate. Um, the legislature has said for the next two years, because they've declared a disaster, we could actually take another 5% with the disaster rate.
What they said was, if you remember, we could go up to 8%. That was our cap in the years passed. They came back this year and said because of the COVID, we adopt the 8%, we could adopt the 8% this year and again next year. And I, I think we told you that, but based on your instructions to us, we didn't do that. The law says our new cap is 3.5%. We could go up to 3.5% this year. But again, uh, the governor came out and the legislature said we could take 8% this year and again next year. Some cities are doing that, I guess. I don't know which ones are. But we're taking the, what's it called? Same taxes last year or same revenue as last year rate, which used to be the effective rate?
Effective rate.
Yeah, that's where we are.
We're sticking with the, so the effective rate is what, what you're asking for at .3652?
Yeah, that's not-
That's, that's what's in the budget right now. But then there's also the, the 3712, which is last year's rate there. So you can see it. And then there's the- Last year's rate is the 3712, which is the first column. And then we have the effective rate, which is a 3652. And then we have the rollback rate. Is the, now called the voter approval rate.
We're just showing you, we're at the lowest one without cutting what we'd have the last time, which is like the, you used to call it the effective rate.
Yeah.
Then we're showing you, if, if you want to leave the tax rate the same, that's what this is. If you want to go 3.5%, that's what this is. We're at the effective rate. That's what that did.
And these are just my, my calculated values that I've, that I've done based on downloading the forms. So.
You get the values up?
Um, I can go back and get the values.
No, you said these are your values. Okay.
These are, these are what I've done. I've calculated using truth and taxation.
Right.
Appraisal district hasn't calculated those yet. She's working on doing the calculations.
Actually, she asked for our calculation so she could look at her calculation.
That's correct. So. And I don't know if she's gonna, so she's the one that does the final certifications. I don't know if she's going to put those delinquencies in or not. So I, I'm anxious to see what her final calculation's going to look like when she sends it back.
When do you expect that to be?
Hopefully tomorrow or the next day. She, she was asking me for some numbers today. Um, if she certifies the, the collection rate at 100%. Last year, she certified it at 98%. So we did have some discussion back and forth about where, where she was going to certify those collection rates at. Um, and she said, well, I do have the discretion to even certify them at 102%. I said, well, we've never collected 102% of our property taxes. So I mean, we, we've had some discussion back and forth on it. So there's, there are a few leeways on some of those numbers in there, at her discretion on some of those. So this is what I feel like our numbers should look like. So when we get, when I get her numbers, there will be some discussion back and forth on them. So this, this should be fairly close to what the final numbers look like. Um, based on those calculated numbers, this is what I have estimated that our revenue should look like. And this is the numbers that I've used in our budget. Um, this is kind of doing a direct comparison between last year's numbers and this year's numbers. Um, and if we looked at this revenue and then we kind of did a comparison, if I used last year's rate using the new assessed value, we would basically generate about $80,000 more dollars if we went with the um, we went with the 3, .3712. If we went with the .3712 rate versus the .3652 rate, we would generate about $80,000 more dollars um, in our budget.
And again, you're figuring sales tax is flat.
That's correct. Right, that's correct. And that sales tax adjustment rate, it has to be done based on the way the state comptroller figures it. And they figure it on a, a June through July, I mean, a July 1st through June 30th collection rate as opposed to a September through September collection rate. So that's why those, well, those numbers look a little bit different. But it has to be done based on their, their dates that they put in the, yeah.
If you leave, I mean, just by this, if you leave it at the, leave it at the effective tax rate for 2021, and you're still getting a little bit, I mean, you're above what the revenue was last year, correct?
You're about $20,000 more, but that's just because of the new value that got generated.
Yeah.
About $9 million, yes.
It doesn't take into account the inflation from last year, this year, like healthcare, different things that go up.
Yeah.
We had to really work on it to balance it.
Yeah. Um, the effect of the tax rate and appraisal on a home, and this is if, if you were to go all the way up to the 3.5%, I just, I thought this was very interesting. It would be about $12.47. Um, an average home in Mount Pleasant's about $125,000. So if we were to go all the way up to the 3.5% increase, you, an average home in Mount Pleasant would pay $12.47 more a year. Um, we went in through all the, the revenue. Um, I wanted to just kind of go line by line, kind of give you an idea of what the revenue looks like compared to, to last year. Um, overall, our general fund revenue is down by $153,000. We made some, some cuts in the way we did things. Um, this is kind of just a side by side comparison. Uh, at the end of last year, our revenue was about 12.446 and this year it's about 12.293. So this is kind of how our property taxes, sales taxes and other revenues shook out in the general fund. I'm going to go through some of these individual lines. Um-
Let's go back to that one just a second.
Oh, sorry.
Here, you've got the proposal from 50,000, so you're-
Yeah, interest rates have fallen quite a bit with COVID. Yeah, just overall. Um, this, this past year, our interest rates were up around 1.5, what we were getting on average on our investments, around 1.5, in some cases 1.75. Right now, our interest um, is, it rates around .9%. Um, so I'm going to work really hard to try to reach out and look for some more investment opportunities out there. But overall, just the fact that the market on the interest um, has fallen, it's going to be really hard to get that $90,000. They're just, it's just not out there. Um, the banks just aren't paying it. So we're going to have to, we're just going to have to make that cut. So um, it's just, if you can't get it, you can't get it. I mean, we are limited by what we can invest in by Public Funds Investment Act. So um, it's just, it's going to be one of those hard things to do. Um, police fines, again, we, we have considered to see a downward turn in that. We did make that cut to the budget this year and that cut has continued to remain in this, this budget. Still down 750,000. Tax supported debt, um, this is what the property tax has paid for. Um, we're around 16.8 million in tax supported debt to be paid. 5.8 million of that is street debt. Um, and our next year's payment is about 779,300 and about 453,000 of that is to be paid on the street side. Um, again, here's kind of a breakdown of our general fund expenses. Uh, 12 million, 293 for 2021. Again, we are presenting a balanced budget and it's down by 153,000 as well.
Yeah, wait a second, please.
Sorry. This is just um, what you're used to seeing on your um, your books.
You might want to explain to them this, when you talk about the street debt or the street side and remind them that we have a street fund that's within the debt, the general fund. But the street fund has been set up, you know, a couple hundred thousand going in and building it up. And so this is what we're talking about.
We built that up to about $2 million.
That's correct.
Yeah.
And then I'll, and I'll have a PowerPoint that goes more into detail for that. It's, it's funded by franchise fees. Um, and it's, it's, it's our fund that we've set aside and we have issued debt specifically for that, on that fund that's supported by those franchise fees. And it, it just basically funds our street improvements.
Not every city does that. And that's why I thought since some were new, we agree to go over that. When you talk about the street fund versus the general fund, most cities, it's the same thing. It's all in one. But in our city, it's separated out.
That's correct. Some of the major changes that we did this year was we actually, um, since we've done this contract with um, our, our data processing and um, Datamax, we actually set up an IT department this year. And I pulled out all the data processing and all of the budgets, um, which was about $445,000. And we created a new technology department and it has a budget of about $205,000. Um, and once we pulled it from all across the funds, it, we ended up with the savings there. We did leave a few um, in some of the funds, like we had to leave the utility fund, um, stuff in there. Um, and some of the other funds that are paying in separate funds. The IT fund is in the general fund, but we ended up with the savings of about $143,000 once we finished pulling all of those in and calculating exactly what those contracts would be. Um, and so this was a, a very, a very good way to figure out exactly what contracts we have, what we're paying and make sure we itemize every single one of them and start uh, processing them down first.
If you remember, we were a little concerned because we really didn't know what we were paying and how much where on data processing. So we, we got a new group, but we also pulled all the money out of the budgets and put them in one. Like she said, it, it showed that we had money places we didn't need, kind of thing.
Does any of this savings here have to do with our grant money that we talked about?
No, this does not reflect any of the grant money. The grant money is going to be in its own separate fund, not reflected in the general fund. And I did that for two reasons. One, it's very much easier to track and audit. Um, and two, um, when we get ready to code expenses and individual line items to that, it doesn't get commingled and um, things doesn't get um, messed up. And so you know exactly where those things- And so, you know exactly where those things are going. So, it just really makes it much easier to have a separate fund for those.
Is that why when we go through these, uh, different departments, when there's, when it shows data processing, where, where there wasn't anything last year and it's showing this year, is this why?
That's correct.
Okay.
We want to be able to show you that each department
Yeah.
Cut their budget.
But the prior year, yeah, yeah. We ain't got there yet. But the prior year, that money was in, in another area, correct?
That is correct. So, I mean, in some
Spread throughout the
Yeah, it was kind of spread throughout. What would happen is whenever, even with the old system, whenever the, um, bills would come, they would sit down and try to figure out what, what a percentage went to what department. And they would, they would spend hours in my department trying to figure out where we code these bills. And so, it's just time-consuming, and this way, it can all go to one department. We don't have to figure out, you know, how, what percentage of time this, this person spent with the, with each department and just can go to one.
That's good.
And, and then
Clean.
It's very clean.
Absolutely. It's a great move. It looks great.
Yeah.
I just, I had, I had noticed that already when I was thumbing through, and I'm like, what is this? Okay, it makes sense then. Thank you.
Yeah.
We all make sacrifices.
Yeah, now, some of the stuff we did leave in some of the budget is the court software annual fee. We did leave that in the court budget. The STW annual fee, we left that in the utility fund because that's primarily for the utility billing stuff. We did leave the DataMax, uh, no, the DataMax annual fee is in IT budget. We will put that in there. The MyGov annual fee is the building permit software where they track all the, the building permits. And, um, uh, so that was left in the building permit line. And the Fleeteo annual fee was left in the fleet, uh, line. So, there were a few things that we did leave in the data processing lines. But for the most part, they, but they are all very much line item out. The contracts have been identified because we wanted to make sure that we didn't miss anything. But we tried to really streamline this budget to make sure that we could get the maximum amount of savings out of it.
Well, um, right there, item two for new things, five laptops grant.
Yes.
Was that the limit? Because item three says a computer replacement for fire. Are you limited on how many computers you could get with that grant?
The grant will only pay for laptops. It will not pay for, um, actual desktops. This grant is designed for you, they want you to be able to take this and work. I know why they will pay for laptops, but they won't pay for desktops. They don't want people in the office. They want to make this to where you can work for home.
So, let me ask you a question. Is there any reason we know why, even though item three is considered a desktop, that it can't just be, go ahead and be a laptop?
I would have to direct that to chief.
Just asking.
And if we could get the grant money part.
I mean, that's what I'm just saying, if we can get the grant money, and I mean, too, it gives chief the opportunity to, if that particular employee, I know it might be a desktop, but if something does come up and they need to mobilize, they can carry that laptop with them as well.
What's that for? What's it for?
But with the laptop, you can get a docking station and dual monitors and make it feel and look just like a desktop.
That's correct.
I'm just thinking if we could save a little bit and take advantage of the grant, we lump that in with the grant and just give them a laptop.
And that grant's coming through the, through COVID stuff, correct?
That's correct.
And that's good through the end of the year so we could finalize this budget and add it to that.
Need to use the budget that money.
I agree with, I agree. If, if possible.
I mean, but that's, that's chief's call, too. I mean, if chief thinks that's something he could work with and that's something to consider.
Let him know how many computers we gave the chief this year.
He got, um, you got the, just the six for the EMT, right, right now? Or is it, was it the five for the? How many laptops did you get so far?
For the, for the EOC. And then, and then there was, and then there was, did you have any more for the office? The thing, we worked with I, with DataMax to tell us which computers probably need to go, which ones didn't, that kind of thing.
Well, and I realize sometimes you have to have a desktop, depending on what the application is being used for, because sometimes a laptop can't do what a, that desktop can do. So, anyway, I was just looking at that and just trying to see where we could, advantage of the grant if necessary.
Look here.
Well, we will look at trying to, uh, get that computer replacement done through the grant. The last on there was an employee for IT that we want, that we really desperately need. This, this would be a employee that would be on staff to do all of our moving of computers from one office to another during any, just basically helping set up printers, helping just do like programs, downloads, setting up just like little computers, that sort of thing to move around. This would kind of be a person to do all of our tickets, make sure all of them are done, kind of be a go-between between our office and DataMax. Right now, it's kind of being handled between me and Candace. Candace is doing the majority of that work. It's, it's just a thirty thousand dollar position. It is not funded currently, but it is something that we are desperately needing in our budget. It's just a, a technical position. I know y'all have said no new positions, but this is one that I would like y'all to please consider if you would adding for us.
They asked me to have my assistant city manager handle this.
Well, I mean, it's
This guy could serve as my assistant manager.
Let's see, I thought Ed was going to do it.
Is he going to be your driver, too?
Yeah, you remember. Ed can do it, right?
Hey, Ed, Ed, is he going to be your driver, too?
Yeah, yeah, he could be my driver, too.
So, like I said, I, I know that we, you know, y'all did ask us for no new positions, so we did not, that's why this one specifically says not funded.
Well, let's, let's move on.
For the fleet, one of the other things that we did was we sort of moved all of the tires and auto equipment and all of the, the manual replacement stuff for like the, the maintenance of the fleet. And we put most of that into the shop fleet line.
This is similar to the IT stuff. It was scattered all through the budget. We brought it in to here.
And the reason why we did that is because with the way that we're doing our, um, our, most of our purchase orders now, it allows Chris, our fleet guy, to go in and just do his purchase orders directly into the system. Whereas before, every time a vehicle needed to be replaced, he would have to go out to the individual departments and see if they had the money in their budgets to replace it. And if they had the money, then, you know, he would kind of do it. If they didn't, then, you know, maybe that vehicle would get the part done or whatever. He'd kind of be scrounging. This allows him to manage the fleet as a whole, as a city, um, and repair the vehicles as they're needed and manage his budget. By doing that, he felt like he could reduce the entire cost of about fifty thousand dollars, um, as a whole, and still be able to manage the entire fleet of the city. So, we did that. I talked to him. We feel like we could do this. This also, there was a, a transfer from the utility fund to the general fund into that fleet line of two hundred and fifty thousand dollars. This, I split his salaries and everything between and created a fleet line, a fleet department on utility fund. So, we have some money in the utility fund for maintenance. He has some money on the general fund for maintenance to kind of control those. This eliminates that transfer between those funds, and it addresses the audit concern that there were just too many transfers that didn't make sense to the auditors. Also, in his, in his budget, he requested, um, a fifty thousand vehicle lift, a parts washer, to repair the service center roof, replon the shop, and a roof exhaust fan.
Is the vehicle lift, is that a replacement or is that an additional or?
Subdition.
I believe that's an additional lift.
That is an additional lift.
That was an additional lift.
Right now, they're, have to jack them up and block them up and crawl under and
So, we don't have one, period?
Oh, I think we, I think we have one. This is for the big, the big, yeah, big trucks.
Yeah, this would be to, to do fire trucks, dump trucks, and some of the heavier. This is for a fifty, a fifty-ton vehicle, I believe, so some of the larger vehicles so they can get underneath of them.
But they jack them up, block them up, and then they crawl under them on the
Lot safer than all of them.
Yeah, yeah, this would be a lot safer.
Adam, this is expensive. Why, why are they just not coming?
Why what?
For Adam, like this, for the lift. Why have they all where they can?
That's a good question. I, I've been here that long, I'm wondering why we don't have it, too.
They have lifts, they just don't have the lifts big enough for the bigger trucks.
Yeah, and when you, you go out and you, you got them laying on their back and crawling under them, it's kind of
Is that right? Okay.
We, we live, oh, go ahead.
Anthony.
Sir.
So, if we were to approve this fifty K lift, the existing lifts, would we still need those? Or can we turn around and try to resell those and get some money back? So, so this fifty K lift is not universal between small to big?
I bet you've got big ones in there continuously.
When, I, I just might want to say, you know, you come into a place, there's certain areas you look at what you might could privatize, you know, contract out and that kind of thing. Chris and his group is really, I think, saving us a lot of money for what they do. I don't remember being in a city that does their fire trucks, that heavy-duty stuff, whatever. He can do it all, he and his staff does it all. There may be some, there may be some, uh, uh, specialty stuff that you have to go out. But he does a lot of work on our, our stuff. I think saves us a lot of
That's good. Good savings.
Our existing maintenance facility can accommodate the new lift? Our space is concerned?
How many others do we have? There's keys.
From not, for the non-departmental department, this is another one where I went through in workers' comp and liability insurance. We get one, we get one bill from TML. And my staff was spending quite a bit of time going through and reallocating and splitting this bill up through all the different departments. And again, this is a line item that none of the departments really had any control over in their budget. And it was just really creating a lot of time on my staff's part to allocate this bill out. So, this was just reclassed and, um, moved into, um, the non-departmental for efficiency purposes only. So, now, when we get the bill, we can just code it straight out to non-departmental. It, it really didn't save us any money. It's just more of a, if, I mean, it saved us time, basically, so we can get more things done and improve efficiency.
Once again, inside each department, that's notated, it's liability and workers' comp, but it's all TMA?
That's correct.
Okay.
So, a few, few things. Police department, they had a second-phase fire upgrade. Parks department requested mosquito machine. We are regaining two new trucks in the parks department.
They're replacements, aren't they?
Yes.
Do we get a little, do we get a little bit of money back on the, the existing ones? Do we do a trade-in? What do we do with those?
I think we, we auction them, no, we
The street fund, again, this is that fund that we fund it from franchise, uh, fees. Right now, current fund balance on that street fund is two million, four thirty-eight, eight fifty-five. So, that's what we have in reserve for that fund right now. Franchise fees, excuse me. Sorry.
Blessings.
Excuse me.
It's a little bit cool in here, that may be why.
Extremely.
Oh, it's freezing.
Well, they turned it off.
It feels really good.
This, this fund is funded by our, our franchise fees. Sorry about that. Excuse me. And we, this is the one that we performed the audit on, and we received the two hundred and ninety thousand dollars back on that. And we did the amended budget on it. So, it's really showing that we're right on target with the budget for that. We, we, we budgeted for, um, twenty twenty-one kind of remained flat. We're still continuing to do an audit on these, and we, they found some more revenue for that. And so, we're going to expect probably some more additional revenue from that franchise fees.
With, with new industry, just take, for instance, the new, uh, uh, Atwoods.
Yes.
Well, that's true. And, but the
But we've got an audit going on, do we not?
Yes, and we just had a report today, and, uh, you know, they found several. We're doing two things. If you remember, we hired, we, uh, we asked them to draw up a new, uh, franchise agreements, a contract for two of the utilities that expired in two thousand and fifteen or eighteen or something like that. We, we should jump on them a year before they expire and redo them, but we've had them expire. So, before we go talk to them about the, the, and we have talked to them about, we've gotten their companies and so, who they're serving, and we found out who's in the C limits and who isn't on the list and that kind of thing. It's, it's remarkable how many more we found. But we're, we're going to be coming to you probably, uh, August first, September approving those, uh, uh, franchise agreements.
And that can be additional funds.
Yes, and what, what we do, we'll get with them, and Kerry will draft it, and then we'll send it to them to look at and go, go back and forth. And when they finally agree on the agreement, we'll approve it. Then, once it's approved, we'll go back to them and say, we need to check our list with your list because we're finding some that aren't on your list, that aren't in the city. And there should be some back, uh,
But as far as budgeting goes, you're not
We don't know what that is.
Yeah, right. I'm not, yeah, I don't know what that is. So, we're, we're, we're kind of backing that two ninety out to kind of
Surprisingly, it's, it's
Mikel, but did you still create a separate, uh, franchise fee line item in the budget so you can notate what comes in and you're showing where it's going if it's being reallocated?
If you want me to do that, I can. I'm, right now, I'm just putting it all in the same franchise fee line.
Just so we have a way to know or notate this much came in from this franchise? I don't know if you're keeping record of that.
We do, we do do that. But, I mean, I, I keep up with that separately on, on, you know, in the, in the usual line. I mean, we, we receive all of that in through our cash receipt system. But on the general ledger itself, it's just one, I mean, we just have one line that says franchise fees.
But do you also have another line or note indicator in there to say, I took two hundred thousand from the franchise fee and moved it over here?
Right.
Okay, that's fine. That's all, neither do I.
Yeah. Tourism, hotel tax, civic center, I kind of group all these three together because they're kind of all funded together. So, for me, it's, it's, it's hard to distinguish between them. So, for me, I mean, I almost want to put all three of them in the same fund because they're just basically transfers between each other to create them, but
He talked about that in the audit with us this year.
Yeah, they did, yeah. So, I, I wanted to kind of get y'all's feedback before I did that, um, and, and see if that's something y'all want to do with this budget.
Say?
Well, the auditors really didn't have an opinion one way or another on this, but they always want to treat the civic center as a income-based. And so, they always want to report that as a lost income when it doesn't make any money. But it's never going to make any money because it's, it's more, it's subsidized by the hotel tax.
So, by putting it in here, we resolve that issue?
That's correct. So
That's what we need to do, then.
Well, I mean, I, okay, I mean, that's
That's, we, we discussed that, I think, last time and, uh,
Yeah.
Yes, we did.
So, I mean, it's, it's one of those things that, right now, it's three, it's really three separate budgets. And so, um, I just, again, this, before I do that and go through the trouble of making it all one fund, I wanted to really just
Where does the revenue from tourism come?
The tourism comes from, uh, a transfer out of hotel taxes.
I was going to say, so that's tourism, it, isn't a generator, it's, it's hotel motel.
It's the hotel motel tax. And then, it gets like a twenty thousand dollar transfer out from the hotel tax. And then, the civic center gets a transfer out of the hotel tax. And hotel tax, all it does is take money in, basically.
And then, we also have a hundred and eighty thousand to the chamber.
And then, so, and then it gets, that gets paid out of the hotel tax.
How about the hotel tax? How about the hotel tax, are they, are the hotels current on their?
Um, we are working on an audit of them, you know, y'all approved that. So they just sent me the letters that are fixing to go out to all the hotels that we're, we're doing. And it's gonna go on the letter.
Are they, where we?
Yes, they are paying current, all of them are, are still current. So, right now, if you look at where they are, um, if you combine all of them, their fund balance is around ninety-four thousand dollars. That's where their fund balances are. Um, and the hotel motel revenue, um, we're, we're budgeting about five hundred and fifty thousand dollars. They're, they're about two, about two and a half percent below budget, that's where they're running right now. Um, and, and that's kind of expected because of COVID, so they're still running kind of low.
This is based on what they're paying us?
Yeah, based on what they're paying us. So I still went ahead and budgeted five hundred and fifty thousand dollars next year. That's just because I expect the audit to, to bring back some revenue sources for us. Um, just because, um, I think that they, they will go in and train them on how to collect their taxes correctly. I think they will go in and, and help them and, you know, put them on the right track with what they're supposed to be doing, maybe find us some lost revenue there as well. So I, I think that we're, I'm confident that we'll still hit that five hundred and fifty next year. And, and the hotels and stuff are picking back up a little bit. Um, the last couple of times I've been around and stayed on, the parking lots have been full.
Oh, they definitely are.
So, I think, I think our revenue's gonna pick back up, so I, I'm confident that we'll be okay with that five hundred and fifty, so.
I have a question. So, if you combine this together, when we have the audit next year, when they, when they wrote the discrepancy out, will it be on the next year?
It'll probably, if, it'll be next year, just because this is the twenty twenty-one and it wasn't combined for twenty twenty. So we'll probably get that comment for one more year about the civic center being a negative, because it wasn't combined for, for twenty.
They audit this year.
They'll audit nine thirty, twenty, but it would go away for twenty twenty-one.
But they'll probably also put a note in there that that's been changed in this already.
It wasn't a major, it wasn't a major issue, we discussed it with.
Right, right, and so, and what they'll do is they'll say, you know, we'll say, we noticed it, we noted, but it's been, you know, resolved. So they'll, they'll say the comment, but then, yeah, but we, yeah, but it's been, I mean, and they may not make a comment, because it's already been resolved for twenty twenty-one. So, I mean, well, it'll just have to be a discussion with the auditors. So if y'all don't have any comments on hotel motel, we'll move into utilities. Okay, uh, utility funds, um, water sales still remains the largest source of revenue, followed by solid waste and by sewer charges. Um. I think I put that in twice. Here's a look at, uh, what your water estimates are. Now, I, it, I left water estimates flat for twenty twenty-one, just because I'm not sure what COVID's gonna do. Um, if the schools go back into session full-time and.
Have football games and shit.
Football games, and they start using their water, um, then we may see an increase in our water sales and our water revenue may go back up. If their water usages and stuff, uh, if COVID continues and the, and the classrooms are not in session and we still continue to, uh, do as we were this, this past, you know, six months, then the usage is gonna continue to be down. And we're still gonna see this, this little bit of a decrease that we've seen in our water sales usage-wise. Um, so I don't want to increase our revenue that much, because I don't want to count on it. And if we get it, then we can go back in and bump up, um, later at six months. I want to really take a hard look at our revenues and our resources at six months, but I want to really be conservative on our revenue going into this budget. Um, because it's very important that, you know, we all know that COVID's here for the long run. Um, it's not going away anytime soon, at least that's what I, I feel. And I want to be conservative when we look at this budget. So, um, it seems like our water utility side is more volatile and more affected to that than our, than our, uh, general fund side is. So knowing that, that's how I've kind of approached this utility fund side. So I've kind of gone in with the approach that everything's gonna be flat and, and kind of budgeted it based on where I expect it to end up at the end of this year.
With the solid waste here you've seen, uh, because we know we've got more.
The solid waste, uh, yes, I've increased it a little bit, because we've added some cities. They've raised their rates, um, and I know that for a fact that that, the solid waste, again, is one of those ones that hasn't been as affected by COVID. Um, and so with some of those knowns, we've, I've increased the solid waste a little bit.
But you're just basing this on what we've got now with no additional increase?
Right.
From other cities or anything else that might come in?
We did a five percent increase based on what they said their.
I did a five percent increase on solid waste collections based on what they, they said their rate increase was gonna be.
I went and talked to Gene, he said, like, our rates haven't been affected by it, but he said that, that since the COVID's gone in, their, their piles of garbage have increased tremendously.
You talked about that, yeah.
Yeah, so it's affected them.
That's kind of where the, the water rates are. Um, your debt service, um, is approximately one point six million dollars of debt service is what, what we have annually. Um, this is about five thousand dollars less than last year. Um, and it, and our, our debt service and the water is very consistent payment. If you look at where, what our debt service is, it's very consistent all the way down. And that's really what you want to see on the water and sewer. Because what that does is it allows, as you, as your city grows, as your utility department grows, um, then you can use that additional revenue for growth to put in new infrastructure. So as your, as your revenue increases, then you can fund additional infrastructure in your city. So keeping your, your, your debt level is, is like priority and primary when you're, when you're issuing new debt, so.
Do you remember what the, we paid this year for, uh, freshwater, raw water?
Um, I would have to look, it's, it's in the budget. Um, there's a whole section, actually. Next slide, I'll tell you.
The, uh, the reason I say that is I got a, a note from Darryl Grubbs just recently. He should have got it a little sooner, he apologized, but thi- this year it's going to one point four, one five, six four. I think it was about one.
One, one point four four is what we paid, a million, four hundred and forty-seven thousand.
He says one.
Is what I budgeted, one million eighty-nine is what we.
I mean, for this last year.
Dale, pay one twenty-five.
What we, what we budgeted.
We budgeted one million, four forty-seven.
That's last year, before you came?
For twenty twenty-one, that's what I budgeted for twenty twenty-one.
No, but what did we do for last year?
I budgeted the same, that's what we budgeted for last year too. That's, no, that's what we paid year-to-date actual. But that's still, we saw three minutes, three minutes to go.
Anyway, anyway, so it's going down.
So it's gonna go down?
Well. Let me tell, what, what was your number, one?
One million, four, four, seven, three fifty, that's what we did last year.
One million, four, one, five, six, forty. And he said that it, he said that we didn't get enough from us last year. So the true-up in October is gonna be fifteen thousand dollars, not much, but we have a true-up, remember?
Just to meet our minimum.
Yeah, what, what he said was, is that, in our contract, remember we talked about last year? They, they'll give us our, our amount for next year by middle of July, is what this is. And then, and then after the year ends, by October fifteenth, he'll tell us about what we need to true-up the contract, what, what we, what we didn't meet, you know? In fact, that amount next year may not be enough, but that's their, their estimate. Then at the end of the year, they say, well, we're short, so they divide that up, send us another bill by October fifteenth. So he said it was fifteen thousand, which is really nominal this year, so.
I guess there's possibility, since they're a, a public or private entity.
Public.
I guess there's possibility of asking them to go back, to help us with that a little bit, because of all what we got going on.
Well, it's their cost, their cost for water, so, um.
I mean, I mean, is that?
We could go back and ask, I, it, I don't know that it would make any difference.
Don't know if it'd make any difference.
But, but.
But I mean, I didn't know if they were, they were restricted by governmental policies that they could or couldn't, or, I mean.
You know, I don't know if I can answer that, but I know that when we, we bought Potable Water where I was before, and, and I remember getting a three hundred thousand dollar increase in next year's, but.
Yeah.
And then in, in October, getting a three hundred thousand dollar true-up. And so it was a six hundred dollar, six hundred thousand dollar turn in, in, within a couple of months. But this doesn't seem to be as, as drastic.
No.
I was thinking what we budgeted around one point two, but that's, so that's really good. If we budgeted one point four four, this, this seems to be less, so.
That's, that's kind of what I, what I made through, I ran out of time to finish my PowerPoint, so.
Now we're open to, to, for questions or go to go through the budget as you want and ask about specific things. But we want you to know, this is a lean budget. So when we cut anything out, uh, uh, I mean, you can't add anything in, but if you want to cut something out, um, I guess, but it's very lean, it's bare bones. I, I remember we talked about the gun enhancement, police department had, chief asked about. We, we left it in, thinking you got a new chief coming, we'll let, let him see what he wants to do. That's, was our thinking behind that, but.
And that's upgrading the, uh, the handgun?
Yes.
That's, what was that, red dot sign, is that what that was? I mean, I, I'll just crank up, it, we, we keep talking about effective tax rate and rollback rates and stuff like that. I have no will to go anywhere close to a rollback query. I don't, I really don't have any will to go anywhere past the effective rate, so.
Or, that's why we.
And that's what, and that's, and that's, that's what this budget is set for. And, you know, I understand, the, the department heads are, are, are responsible for coming up here and battling for their department. I, I completely understand that, but we're also, we're charged with sitting up here and battling for the taxpayers. So, I mean, I, I just want everybody to understand that nobody's, uh, nobody's drawing out and saying that anybody's doing anything wrong. We're just, we're up here battling and I appreciate, I know, I can see some of you have even trimmed from where y'all were, uh, a month ago. So I appreciate that for sure.
Ed, how many, um, cell phones or wireless tablets does the city have with, is it Verizon or AT&amp;T, uh?
Hell, I don't know if we can tell you how many, I know there's a few in the fire and the police and, uh, maybe one or two or three more tablets. Phones, we give allowance, I don't think we own any phones, do we?
There's no employees that, uh, that phones are being paid for by the?
Yeah, we, we give a, for those who need them, not all employees.
So what I'm getting at is, I don't know how many phones within the city, the city's providing, not just the phone, but also the service. You know, the employee doesn't have to pay the service. And what I'm getting at is, is Verizon, we need to make sure Verizon's giving us the best deal they can give us on our monthly plan, because you multiply that out times twelve, that adds up pretty much.
Yeah, and you mentioned that.
Kind of like we heard of the.
Yeah, yeah, so.
You go back sometimes and ask.
So, I'm just, all I'm saying is, let's go ask, is it Verizon or AT&amp;T, I can't, I don't know who it is.
Well, I, I was notified that our AT&amp;T contract is up for expiration. And so I know that for our AT&amp;T portion of the, the stuff that we have, I am visiting with them right now to, uh, look at our contract. And I know that they have already said that they're willing to give us a thirty print, say, thirty percent savings on our AT&amp;T contract. So I know I'm visiting with them right now.
How long's that contract last?
Um, the contract we had before was a five-year contract, so.
We need to try to, try to hold them to a smaller portion as we possibly can, in my mind. By the way, you can revisit it more often.
If I need to, I can give you a rep to it, Verizon, but I think we need to get a competitive bid with Verizon and see which one we can get down to the lowest. I'm telling you, if you've worked them against each other, you'll get it down.
Well, our AT&amp;T is the one that we have our first net on.
Okay.
So that one, Verizon doesn't offer the first net, so that's the government contract rate with that, so.
Chief, both chiefs and Anthony, Keith, do we have city phones? Your phone, chief. Pay allowance, yeah, they provide your own. We'll look at, you, you've got a few tablets in your departments. We might want to look at that as far as, uh, data.
Did we ever find out, I know Datamask was gonna work on this, but I haven't heard yet, uh, who our service provider is for the city? Who, who provides the city's, uh, bandwidth? Is it Suddenlink, is it People's Telephone, is it Century Link?
I think we moved to, I think we moved to Suddenlink, didn't we? We moved to Suddenlink from Verizon, I think.
And I know Suddenlink typically doesn't require contracts, they're typically month-to-months, but we need to go get them up and see if we can get that number down. I, it may have already been renegotiated recently, but if it hasn't, it's worth revisiting, to help us out on them.
Pretty good.
Yeah.
Overall this year, without just going through all, how many new vehicles have we bought?
We did, oh, this year?
Um, I know we purchased the police vehicles, right, is that correct? Three, three police vehicles?
Three, what departments?
Police, the police.
That's kind of a thing we do every year, Keith, how many?
That's the Tahos, we're going with Tahos this year.
Yes. Keith, how many in your, in your, uh, trucks in your department, in, in parks? How many trucks? Parks, parks is getting two.
Well, no, he's talking, are you talking twenty twenty budget or are you talking twenty twenty-one?
Twenty twenty-one.
Oh, in twenty twenty-one, the, the only vehicles that we're purchasing is the two for, uh, parks, that's it.
And for the parks is it?
That's it.
For twenty twenty-one?
Mm-hmm. That's the only vehicles. No police vehicles.
They came out of this year.
How many did we buy last year, I forget?
There was three purchased last year, there's none this year. Um, we were gonna try and see, uh, based on where the money is, if we can get one more this year. Um, because they were giving them a deal on the leftover, they're changing the body styles on the Tahos. Um, so we were gonna try to see if we can get one, um, of the old body styles, because it would be a fifteen thousand dollar savings. Um, so we're looking at that, see if we can't fit one in out of the fund balance from this year for the police department, so they could potentially get four this year.
How about the street department? Do you swap or move any monies around out of that, to the other fund?
No, no. But I did not transfer any money, um, from any funds to the streets. It's just all funded from that franchise fees.
Money out of the streets to any other place?
No, no, that, it's funded by the franchise fees that come into that fund. So.
We have coming in that the, that should continue to grow.
The two point four million, yeah, but you know, all of the street, um, workers are funded out of that fund. And then the street maintenance is funded out of that fund.
Which was announced several years ago.
Is it?
Remember, you did, you had a fund, we didn't do it last year, because we were, we were really in trouble, but. Was it fund, was it main, Downstream, Main Street, you had a thousand, some money coming out of utility and some coming out of the street fund went to it, right? Yeah, yeah, I don't know if we made that.
I did not make that transfer, yeah, I mean, I can make that transfer if y'all want it.
We probably need to, because that fund's growing, we can take a little bit out and put it in there.
I've got a question, so for the departments that did ask for increases, uh, maintenance and, uh, lift and all of that, i- is there a possibility that we can prioritize the request within one, two, three, four, whatever? And then as we go through the year, maybe not say, hey, I'm fixing to include this in the budget from day one. But as we go through the year, if we can find some savings within each department, move it to the priority list one at a time? Does that make sense?
Yeah, let me ask you, what, what would you do with the savings? Because we're, we're already at the lowest tax, you're talking about.
No, 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 I'm talking about it within departments itself, so, so say. Yeah, yeah, like, like, so we're, I'm not saying, like, you just go absolutely, let's not do anything new, but so the fifty eight thousand dollar lift, okay? So if you say, look, I, I just have to have that for the safety of the guys, okay? If you say that, then, then the other things that are in there, the roof and the, I mean, I can't, I'm just from flipping, but just through my head, the roof and the parts washer and replumbing and stuff like that, are those so important that you absolutely have to have them, or do you slide them over here to the side and go, look, these are the things that if, if we find throughout the year, I don't have as many trucks break down, so I have more money than I thought I would. So now I've got an extra ten thousand, I'll buy the parts washer. Now the rest of this, I'm still not going to do it unless I find, and then all of a sudden you end up, at the end of the year, that particular department has another twenty thousand dollars. Well, then let's do sixteen thousand on the roof. You know what I'm saying? I mean, you don't, so you don't just go, I'm fixing to do everything at one time?
We kind of do that through the budget as we cut things and say prioritize it, so it's kind of already done. And then you do look at it month to month, the things they've got to have right away, they do. A lot of times they're into the spring or summer before they, they still got some things they haven't done. At that point, we usually try to freeze it.
Yeah.
And, and relook at it again.
It'd be good to do with the police cars. Are you talking about those, um, have some money as we, and those are available, and we know we're going to have to buy some next year. They pretty much know that the following year we're going to have to have a couple.
I mean, that's just like the end of the year, you end up with a hundred and fifty thousand, we're going to roll over, okay? So maybe we don't do every single thing that we think we want to do, okay? I mean, but at the end of the year, if we come up and we've got more franchise fees paid in that, that we're expecting to come in, and we've got, and so you have a hundred and fifty thousand. Maybe then you can say, okay, we'll do a couple of these things here, but if we don't come up with something like that, we can put it off till next year.
Yeah.
You know what I'm saying? I mean, I mean, does that make sense?
Yeah, it makes a lot of sense, and I think we kind of already do that. And, uh, and as, as they go through the year, they don't all buy it at once, and, and because really, all the revenue's not there all at once till after January thirty first and so forth, December thirty first. Then, and then the end of the year, we don't really roll money over from this by hundred and fifty. It goes into the general fund or into the fund balance.
Right.
And at that point, uh, we budget all again with, for what revenue we got coming in, so that we're not, you know, adding more and more to the budget and make, make everybody, um, require everybody to justify what, within the money we've got each year and not, not roll it over.
I mean, I, I have no doubt that everybody's going to be as frugal as they can be, but, but you just, you know, just each little, each ten thousand dollars seems minute when you're dealing with this, this money, okay? But mom and pop out there, ten thousand dollars is a lot of money, you know, so I mean, you have to look at it from that standpoint.
Thing that, uh, you know, I know on the sales tax, you've got that flat.
If we have an increase, that would be.
If, if we have an increase, but you have to remember, you know, we probably wouldn't, we'd probably, the increase we've got this year. They spent that money, y'all saw it, you know, go to Walmart and, uh, see the flat screen TV in there. I mean, people were spending that money. But that was a one-time deal over a few months. That helped bring in sales tax. Out that. Forward, you know, I, um, I don't think you did the right thing by not increasing going forward, and I just, you know, really hope that we maintain, that we're just steady with it, because out it, without the stimulus money this year that, uh, couldn't, uh, a lot of money spent this town, and in every town. Seven hundred dollars a, seven hundred a person, five hundred. Money was spent.
And using the, uh, maintenance department as an example, those numbers that were provided for each item that they're requesting, were those just budgetary numbers, or were those hard numbers they got from the vendor or the supplier that's gonna, that we're going to buy the product from, or those hard?
We, we, we asked them to upload supporting documentation for every one of their numbers, so we, I have, most of them I have supporting documentation for their numbers.
So when they say fix the roof over there, what are we talking about? What's wrong, what, I mean, tell me what the roof deal is. How, what, how bad is it? How long has it been that way?
Keith.
Yeah, Keith.
It's a shop, it's a shop.
Shop. Yeah, exonerations, that was like ten grand or fourteen grand, I forget. They've been done.
Oh, they did last week. Okay, well.
See, no, those are the things I'm talking about. I mean, it's, it's like, you know, I have a, you know, at, at the beginning of each year, if, if I want to do something, it's like, you know, you just kind of, you kind of back it up, and if you end up with the extra money, you do it, and if you don't, you don't. If that's the way we do it, that's fine. I'm just asking that we do it that way.
Well, and that, and that's what we've kind of been trying to do, is if we can find the money in this year to do it, then we've been trying to do it, so. Huh, yeah, so there's, there's some couple of cuts right there.
So, so if the, you know, so, so if we do have the extra funds of, of a hundred and fifty thousand this year, is it possible to pull the fifty eight thousand?
For the lift?
For the lift out of that. Of course, that's a glaring, that's a glaring issue.
Eighty five thousand.
Oh, eighty, I'm, I'm sorry, I went dyslexic there for a minute. Eighty five thousand.
And that's something we can definitely look at, if that's something you wanted to. I mean, and that's definitely something we can look at, didn't we?
But I mean, that, that's, I mean, it would be something that would be, be something to think about.
Because it's going to be interesting for us to see in the next couple of days, you said, from the appraisal district, on those numbers there.
Right. Yeah, and, and, and I'm, I'm very conservative in my numbers, so if anything, her number should be higher than mine. So I, I always, um, I'm always very, very conservative in my numbers, so.
Anxiously awaiting seeing those.
For sure.
How many employees do we have right now?
Hundred sixty seven.
We have hundred sixty seven. How many are we going to, with these new additions, a new park and all, replacement of people that are no longer with us, that sort of thing? How many will we have?
We will have a hundred and sixty seven point five, because the EDC added a half-time position to a full-time position.
We're going to have a person, I like.
But, but you take the EDC out away from us, we have the same number.
Yeah, if you take the EDC out, then it's the exact same.
Even with the shuffling around and.
Even with all the shuffling.
Because they went into somebody else's spot.
That's correct.
And that's also include your new IT tech?
That does not include my IT, my IT person. That, that IT person was not funded, as, I mean, I'm requesting that position.
I know it was on Christmas, I just didn't know if that number was part.
Well, I mean, I, I requested it, but next to it, it was not funded, because I requested it and, you know, yeah, I have abided by those wishes to not increase personnel.
Cal, you weren't here when I requested it, and I got the same answer, so.
But I, I'm asking y'all to please allow me to add that thirty thousand dollar position.
Is there, is there a possibility that we can utilize some, I mean, you already have some people in there that are doing intern work. I mean, can we use an intern for something like that for a year? I mean.
My, my interns are going back to school, like, very, very shortly, like, on August fifteenth, when they leave, they're going back to school.
I'm talking. For next year. Uh, huh, do we have that budgeted again?
I do, I do have my interns. Um, for three, that's correct.
Why do y'all do the interns? I'm just curious.
Well, my, they're, 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 well, I mean, I use it as a mentor program. Like, we, I, we, I got one from Chapel Hill in my office and one from, uh, Mount Pleasant. And I've, I've spent a lot of time with them, just teaching them kind of the way to do things and the way behave and act, and, um, they, they help. They did a lot of good stuff for us as well. Um, they, they typed up a lot of, a lot of stuff in this document, actually, for me, and did some formatting work. Um, but, and we do pay them by the hour, so it gives them some time. Um, we paid them, what is it, twelve dollars an hour? Um, and in addition to them allowing them to get some on-the-job training, um, and we work directly with the Mount Pleasant High School and Chapel Hill High Schools, um, Department.
That's fine, I just kind of wondered, I'm.
And then.
We also have some, we also have some out in.
We have.
That work in public works and in utilities. They work in parks, they weed eat, so two or three of the high school kids, football kids that do that.
And then we have one in the library that helps restock the shelves and the books and that.
That's usually in the summer only.
Only in the summer. It's, um, yeah, when they get out.
It's not a full-time, it's just a. Ten.
That's correct. Well, twenty-two thousand five hundred is what we budgeted.
And then the next year's budget, was it, was the issue of the swing pool addressed at all, either to remove it or work on it at all? Was there any money either way for the swing pool to?
We, no, because we haven't talked about, we really need to have a hour workshop or two, just to talk about what to do with it. Uh, we, um.
So if we decide that, you know, do something substantial, that was over a million dollars, million and a half was coming around. That's a, that's a lot of money that we've got to come up with next year to do anything.
Anything we do with that would, like that would have to be a, a, a bond issue to take care of it. We couldn't take it out of the budget.
Are there ever any grant monies available for?
We'll have a Parks guy coming pretty soon that'll be able to maybe answer some of those and have time to do that. We've, we've not chased that. Now, Lanny's here, our engineer, and, uh, he's looked at it, and he, he can, in fact, he's mentioned a couple of times to pass it, if we're ready for him to come and talk about it at a council meeting, but our agendas have been so long, we.
What did the COVID nineteen, did that not affect the pool some way, maybe the way it shifted, Lanny? Everything's blanked out.
Until COVID's done away with, I just don't think it's prudent to even consider redoing it.
Something saying, are you fixing to open up, are you fixing to open up a brand new water park?
Absolutely, but I just wondered, and when this budget we're talking about, it was.
We're fixing to open up the third pad. We're going to have three pads, and you'll have three pads. And as far as I'm concerned right now, with the money the way it is, I don't see any money. I'm like, Ed, that, that'd have to be a bond issue or something. We, we don't have that kind of money right now.
Yeah, so I wanted to echo kind of what Sherry brought up about the student workers. Okay, where I work, we have a student worker program. And, uh, what we do is employees that have children that are old enough and legal to be able to work, they work, uh, all year round if, if they choose to, or, you know, if we hire them on to work in the department. So I don't know how many employees we have within the city that have.
We have a couple of them.
That are old enough that could work to do, like Sherry was saying, to come in and be an extra hand to help in IT or helping any other department.
They just don't get to work for their.
The school.
Well, they don't have to work for their father or mother or whoever, but my point is, those resources are available.
Do we not, do we not have IT programs at most schools?
Yep.
I, I, I can look into it if that's, I mean, and if I can get a little extra money to, to help pay for it, um.
So where's the money for the internship come from now?
Right now, we've reallocated the pool workers.
Swim.
Swim, you know, because we had lifeguard money for the, you know.
So is this something new that we've started?
Yes, this was brand new. All, I mean, the money was there for the lifeguards, and it was not being used, so we just basically reallocated the money for the lifeguards.
It's not a new program. It's new for Mount Pleasant, but it's, it's very normal to do that. Help putting budgets together and running this and that.
Yeah, I mean, at my previous jobs, I've had interns every year.
Because you can find real, some really good help doing that. We, we do it every year, and we always have great help, and you don't have, you know, you don't have to worry about the benefits, and you're paying the hourly rate, and it's costs less than having to contract somebody or hire a new full-time employee.
I think we have two or three, uh, I think there's two or three employees, kids involved in our thing.
Okay.
How much is, how much is the insurance, uh, premium increase? Do you have a rough figure on that?
We, we put in a twelve percent increase. That's where we're at right now. We're still in negotiations with the insurance party right now, twelve percent.
Darlene's doing that, Darlene's doing that, that, that negotiation. It came back at eighteen or twenty or something, and so she's gotten it down to, we hope, ten, but.
Pretty good. That's a third. How's, what's your technique, hon? I'm getting it from eighteen to twelve. Oh, I should know by then. I should know by the end of the week.
How much did we increase last year, if you remember?
Yeah, I think.
And that increase is just to kind of maintain what we currently offer, right?
That's correct.
Don't change coverage or deductive, it's just, it's just a premium increase.
That's correct.
High deductible, this is our third. Typically seen a lot. A little bit more increase in.
One of the other things, uh, in the, in the, uh, financial part of employees, uh, back in nineteen seventy, there's a thing called longevity. Employees get four dollars a year per month, per month for each year of service. And, uh, that was a law that was passed back in nineteen seventy-four for police and fire, uh, get that. And that's be four bucks a, a month, which is not a lot. Most of this, and, and, um, again, that was in seventy-four. We do that, every, every city I'm does that, but a lot of the other cities are, have got those way up high. I mean, the four dollars is the nineteen seventy-four rate. That's the law, that's the minimum. A lot of cities have that up, and, and I think on the year that we're not having a salary increase, it would, might be a good idea, it's a good time to consider raising that a dollar or two dollars, maybe six dollars per month for each year. And I think that the amount, we haven't figured it, because I, I said we got to leave it out, because we don't have much money, but the amount is maybe ten thousand dollars or, I mean, because it's not a lot of money. Now, Darlene it is, because she's been here for so long, I'm teasing, but, but for most employees, it's, it's paid out, and police and fire, you have to pay it every month. But for most employees, you pay it like between Thanksgiving and first of the year, first of December, and it's kind of a hundred dollars or a hundred fifty dollars or something like that. Um, uh, it's probably not a bad idea to consider doing that at this time, rather than if we had any money, we could do it.
Uh.
There's no raises in there, is what I'm saying.
Just to follow up back on the vehicles that we're looking at getting, just a question on that. Did we seek out multiple sealed, sealed bids on those, or do they just come from one?
I think they come from the buy board mainly.
Normally that's from the buy board, but.
Which, which they do, they do the bids.
They do the bid, they go out and get multiple bids.
Yeah, and then they, we can buy off of the buy board for the state.
We have a lot of overtime each year, just in various departments.
Yep, uh, fires killing us.
I know. Over time.
Well, hey, Ed.
Well, they're probably going to go, they're looking at, they spent, what, about a hundred and fifty thousand this year? He thinks it's going to be about three hundred next year. Because he's been keeping, our, our minimum is ten, ten at the, at each station. Is that right, chief?
Yes.
But we've been keeping just nine for this last year.
But we've not had to keep so many now.
Yeah, you got to keep so many for each truck, and you got to have somebody at the back, supervisor there and so forth, so. Um, chief, you can explain that if you want to go ahead and tell them where we were and what we're doing. His, we cut him back to about what he spent last year, but, but, um, we don't want him to close any stations or only half-time.
But we got to have so much to keep insurance right to the certain.
That's right. But he, but one of the things we noticed, he, he was going up a big increase on his overtime, so we cut him back to, we had that discussion today, to what he had last year. Not sure he can maintain that all year long. He's pretty sure.
Basically, in years past, we've used part-time firefighters to fill in for our leave, and, uh, uh, that program is just not feasible anymore, uh, for a number of reasons. Uh, one, they can only work so many hours based on TML retirement and all that, that we didn't used to have to go by. We went by the commission's regulations, which meant they could work a lot more hours than what they can now. And, and to, and to be able to buy, or, uh, to, uh, to get guys to come in for ten, fifteen dollars an hour, uh, when they can only work like maybe one shift a week, then it's hard to keep anybody like that. It's also for buying the protective equipment. Um, our bunker gear now has a shelf life on it. So since there's a shelf life on bunker gear, it's hard to, uh, you can't just go over to Casco, which is our vendor over in, uh, Treeport. Can't just go over and buy it anymore. You got to order it. Well, then they got to make it, so it's about a three. So it's about a three to four month process to get the gear. So, with just a lot of different things, so, um, we still have to have people working. So we have ten people assigned to each shift, the deputy chief and, uh, and the rest of the crews to fill two stations. When one of those is off, somebody's gotta fill in for them. And so, again, we were using part-time to do that. But now, since we don't have part-time, it's gonna be full-time folks to do that. And it's gonna cost more to do that. Like I said, it's, uh, we, we budgeted about a hundred and fifty thousand this year, but I'm, I'm sure we're gonna use more than that probably. So, uh, boils down to we, we have to have, uh, Texas Commission on Fire Protection says we cannot go inside a structure unless we got four people on scene. So if we get there with three, your house is on fire, we can't go in. We can do a lot of stuff on the outside, but we can't go in. So, uh, you know, it, it boils down to the National Fire Protection Association says we should have fifteen people on every structure fire. Well, we go to the county, we take four. So we're already behind the curve on manpower needing to be on the street. Luckily, uh, we do not have, uh, it has not occurred many times where we've been, uh, uh, double booked, so to speak. For example, yesterday, we went out in the country club to a house that was on fire. You know, luckily, everybody was in the station, we got there real quick, got a knockdown. But if we had have been out in the county on a wreck on the other side of the county and, uh, a wreck out here on South Jefferson, like we were a couple of weeks ago, when we were there for over an hour trying to cut a family out of their van, that house would have burned down. So, uh, you know, we, we did a fire study in twenty, twenty sixteen that basically says we should have three fire stations fully staffed to, to meet the needs of, of Mount Pleasant, Titus County. And that's the other thing, we cover the whole county. It's not like a thirty, a, a sixteen thousand population. We're covering thirty-six thousand, uh, population plus the transit folks that are in here, which it's about, I think, eighty thousand something a day. That's kind of a number I've heard. So, uh, you know, we, we are extremely, uh, we're understaffed for what we're being asked to do.
You had originally asked for six in your, in the prior budget meeting, uh, and obviously you've taken those out for right now, but, uh.
He, he didn't take them out.
Well.
We took them out.
I, I understand that.
I took them out.
But, but, but understanding what we had going on, how long, I mean, obviously, we're gonna spend a little more, uh, on overtime and stuff like that. How long do you think we can squeak by, like in another year, possibly? Two years? At, at our current level?
Current level of overtime or current level?
No, no, current level of manpower. I mean, I mean, just, I mean, uh, understanding that you, you think we need more, but it's just, you know, can we chew on a piece of leather for another year?
Well, we're, we're actually postponing, we're, we're talking about, we were supposed to read into the contract this year and start hopefully adding people and working towards those stations.
Yeah, yeah.
But, uh, we're, we're gonna postpone, uh, that's what we talked about, is just extending the contract for another year. See what, how COVID shakes out. And then as we go into this next year's budget and start preparing for, for trying to, to move forward on what was recommended in the fire study.
Okay.
My partner, just one employee, one firefighter with his. Retirement, what, what does one cost a year?
Uh, salary and benefits is about, uh, probably about sixty-two or three now, if we bumped up. Uh, that's just for salary and benefits. Uh, their, their ensemble is about eight thousand for that.
And their training?
Yeah, training. It takes about ten thousand, but the time you put the, the radios, the, some of the other equipment, uh, bunker gear, uniforms and all that's probably another eight to ten thousand to get them ready to go, besides your salary and benefits.
So, so forever too, you get a hundred and twenty-five a shin, a year? Salary, salary-wise, uh, but not, not counting your initial, not counting your initial investment?
With the adjustment on the salary and stuff we're doing this year, cause I think the number we used last year before us is about sixty thousand starting off. And we, we've increased pay and benefits, so it's, it's gonna be fifty-two, sixty-three, somewhere along in that.
So if we could skate by this year and maybe possibly add a couple of next year and then a couple more the following year, kinda build up, or?
It, it would actually work better for us than threes, cause we had three shifts.
But you've asked the county in the past, they've, they've participated in, in help with the half, so if you hire.
Yeah, the county has helped fund some of the firefighters in the past, split the cost, which again, I think that's kinda what we're looking at is, is trying to, uh, you know, get the county to help more on, on.
Well, if we can, if we can extend that contract for another year and then possibly all of us, us and the county, look at splitting three and then maybe the year that's split in three more, it'd be a little more manageable. Yes.
It, we get to a point, if, if we were to fully staff, well, even if we didn't fully staff the station, there's a point where if we get enough, uh, be able to just let down to keep ten on duty, if we had at least a couple more on each shift. It, it would knock our overtime.
There'll be a time, there'll be a time where it doesn't make sense.
Chief, chief spent a hundred and fifty thousand on overtime this year. He's requesting three hundred and.
Fifteen thousand.
Fifteen thousand for next year. Uh, we, we took him back down to a hundred and fifty and said, and, and he said, I, I'm gonna run out of money. I can't do it. So, so.
So chief, in that two thousand sixteen study, do they recommend where that third station should go?
Somewhere out south. Really, the, the ideal location is the, uh, my call, Parkway enter, right there by the airport, that intersection. It would allow us to get up on the interstate or the, uh, the loop, go into the southeast part, southwest part of the city, jump on thirty-four seventeen, go out in that part of the county or get on Jefferson to come up into the city. Uh, whether that land would be available or not, uh.
So when we get, when we get to that point though, to decide to do that, do you know if there's any type of programs or grants out there that could help us financially with the, the dollars to build the facility?
Yeah, we, we can check, but there's, don't know any.
And again, too, we could incorporate the county, cause, you know, we help support the county every day. And with, without us, the county would be in trouble.
That's what I was gonna ask, and I, just in round figures, and I'm just off the top of your head, and if you're not able, then don't put yourself in a corner. But what percentage of our efforts are spent outside the city limits? And, and, and what percent of your budget, I mean, are they, and I'm not trying to dump on the county.
They're paying twenty-four percent of our costs.
They're paying twenty, but, but are they getting more than twenty-four percent of our services?
Yes, I, I don't have with me tonight, but we've worked up over a five-year period of what we do in the city and what we do in the county.
Yes.
In the, the instance like structure fires, rescues, uh, the, uh, the high-hazard incidents, uh, we actually have more in the city. But we, it takes more time out in the county. So even though the runs in the county are less than what we do in the city, we actually spend more time out in the county on those calls. So it's, it's kind of a, if you go by numbers, best I remember, it's more in the city, but out in the county, it takes us longer. When we're out there, it's, you know, it just takes us longer.
And back to your point, when, when you're working something out in the county, it leaves the city vulnerable.
We leave, we'll, we'll never leave the city completely, but it's only gonna leave one engine company with four guys on it. If we can't keep everybody on those trucks, then it could end up with three guys on that truck or two guys on that truck. And that's just bad for everybody.
But I'll add, we've, we've had a good working relationship with.
Oh, absolutely.
Worked very well.
I've talked to.
Plus, same taxpayers.
Yeah, same people.
And by no fault of their own, our volunteer fire departments are just not what they used to be. They, it's, and that's nationwide, it's not just Titus County. It's, it's everywhere. People, you know, don't wanna, don't have the time or don't wanna volunteer. It's just the sign of the times.
And the, and the schooling requirements becoming a little more stringent as well.
Yeah, when I got on as a volunteer, it was like, here's your gear, here's a pager, go to the next fire. And now, you know, we just can't, we can't do that anymore. You know, it's, they do background checks, they do driving records, they do, you have to have training before you're gonna be allowed to do stuff. And, and that's one of the things too, when you tell a volunteer fireman or a prospect that here's everything you gotta go through and all the training and stuff, they're like, I ain't got time to do that. And, you know, so, you know, it, it's more than just showing up and going, I wanna be a volunteer.
Guys that do show up, they're really, they're really doing something.
We're down to where we have two.
Putting theirself out.
We have two volunteers left on our department and they're really support, they're not fire, firefighters, but they are, they do, uh, they help a lot on the outside, doing support stuff, you know, helping with the hose, you know. And that's kinda the same thing our volunteer fire departments are doing right now is, is, uh, they, obviously, we have to have water in the county cause we don't have hydrants, so they bring us the water in the tankers. And then they help do the, the peripheral stuff on the outside, wildland fires, which again, we haven't had a wildland season, a bad one in a while. This may be it. And from one o'clock in the afternoon till sundown, that's when we run our fires. That's when volunteers will work. And so it, 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 it could put us in a big strain this year with, uh, if we have a wild season, wildfire season.
Appreciate it, chief.
All right, thanks. That was just a simple question about overtime. Probably asking a harder question.
Sorry.
No, no, I'm, good job, thank you.
I'd just like to say thanks to all the department heads for all that you've, uh, all the hard effort and, uh, we, we realize it, we appreciate it. Also, I'd like to say, I think tonight may be David Corbell last night with us as far as, uh, employee, when you retire, what Debbie is coming. Party, luck to you in your retirement. Thanks for all your many years of service to our city, okay?
Debbie has told me that this will not be the last night, she'll be with us. She plans to be with us all.
Certainly appreciate it, Miss Debbie.
Absolutely.
Got something else, McKeon?
Nope, I'm good.
I know you had to look like you're ready to go.
Sorry.
The council has anything?
Don't we actually vote on this?
Meetings in August, uh, one, the last meeting in August. Have a public hearing?
It'll be, there'll be a special called meeting, um, August twenty-eighth, I believe, and it'll be voted on at that meeting.
To vote on it.
You'll still tweak it a little bit when you get the appraisal numbers?
I will, but, yeah, the, this, this kinda was to give me an idea of what y'all liked about the budget, what you didn't like, what you wanted removed, you know, that kinda stuff, what you wanted added in. So once I get the final appraisal numbers, um, I'll go back, I'll, it'll tell me if we have more revenue, less revenue, whatever it may be. Um, and then I'll tweak it and then at the next meeting, y'all will vote on the tax, on the proposed tax rate.
So not this next Tuesday, but the, the next?
August fourth, the August fourth.
Which is next Tuesday, right?
Next Tuesday, yes.
So we actually do our first vote next Tuesday night?
That's correct. Yeah, um, the, the timeline is very compressed now because of the new rules with the, um, SB two.
Moving up what, thirty days?
Yeah, it, you basically will adopt this budget within the next thirty days. We only have one public hearing now.
When is that?
Two. Um, so you'll have, the, basically, the rule is this Tuesday, you will adopt your, your propos, well, you won't adopt, you'll propose your tax rate. And then the next two weeks, you will have your public hearing on the budget, and then the two weeks after that, you will have your public hearing on the tax rate. And then the next Tuesday, you will adopt it.
I didn't think they voted on anything this Tuesday, do they?
You have to set the proposed tax rate because then.
Oh, so they're voting on the tax rate and approving the tax rate?
No, they're proposing the tax rate.
So now, now we have to vote on a proposed tax rate and then, that's new, and then we vote on the tax rate later on?
You have to vote on, and you have to take a record vote on your proposed tax rate, um, and then that has to go in the paper. Um, and then once you do that, then the next meeting will have a, um, next, the following Tuesday, you'll have like a public hearing on it. Um, and then the following Tuesday after that, you'll have a public hearing on the budget at like your regular meeting. And then we'll have a special hearing after that, have a approval of the budget and the tax rate.
I'm really proud of the employees of the city. Y'all, y'all impress me, most of you impress me all the time. I, I, I'm, I'm grateful to be a part of the city and I, I think y'all have all stepped up this year. It, it's been tough on everybody, so appreciate everybody hanging in there and doing the best they can to watch our budgets. Always wanna give more money. Sometimes it's just not there, a lot of, you know, and I, I really appreciate all y'all have done, all of you. Uh, we got a great city, we have a good-looking city, y'all do a good job keeping things, the buildings are clean. By and large, I think you service the public really well, and I appreciate all you've done this year to try to bring us something that we can not choke the taxpayers with.
Okay, again, thank you all, department heads and, uh, the staff. Uh, at this time, we'll open the floor for a motion to adjourn.
How moved that we adjourned?
Motion by Mr. Tim, I'm sorry, that's by Mr. Jerry Walby, second by Mr. Tim Dale. At this time, we are adjourned.